Call to order, the meeting of February 18th, 2020. Please rise to pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number one, approval of vouchers. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the vouchers.
Is there a second?
Second.
All vote, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of minutes from the January board meeting.
Motion to approve minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any changes or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondents, Mindy, if you want to go through those quick.
Okay, so we have in correspondence, I have a couple of FOIL requests. So we had two of them came in from Fran O'Neil. One is requesting copies of board minutes and written agreements regarding the financial terms of retaining the attorney Todd Steckler and copies of all communicating communications between the Village and Phillips Town Cell Solutions. So whatever we had was copied and sent out. It was a total of 16 pages were sent out in response to that FOIL request. And there was a second FOIL request that same day. This is requesting communications between Village and Open Space Institute, including agreements or draft agreements regarding the Nelsonville owned property on Seacor Street, approximately four acres. So that one was answered, sent out. There were, let me see, on that one, there were 24 pages in response to that FOIL request. And then the third one was to provide all copies of legal bills for 2019 and 2020. Please provide copies of all engineering bills, RF engineering and engineering reports, 2019, 2020. And please provide copies of appraiser bills and appraisal reports related to the Village owned property on Seacor Street, most of which is on the website. And so that was part of the answer. But in addition, there were also 62 pages of correspondence in response to that FOIL request that were forwarded. And then I have a pending FOIL request from attorney Mark Blanchard, which is requesting the building permit, the moment the building permit request comes in for the cell tower on Rockledge, the attorney is requesting copies of that. So, which by law we have to provide. So that is the open FOIL, there it is. Applications and related material as submitted by any party seeking a permit from the Village of Nelsonville Building Department to install and maintain a cellphone tower or other development at 15 Rockledge Road. So anyway, this is pending and that will be answered if and when we get this building permit. Energy Central, there's copies of that as we do every month. And then a new program, Phillips Town Aging at Home, which is a, looks like a community action group that's getting together at the Desmond Fish Library. There's also copies of the flyer there for everyone. And that was it, correspondence.
Thank you. Real quick, just to update everyone, the judge signed the stipulation agreement for the cellphone tower settlement on January 29th. Also, since last meeting, we did have an emergency repair done on Pearl Street to the sewer for a partial collapse of the line there. Just like we've done in the past, when it's a public health emergency, it was affecting three homes, it was dug up, fixed, and will be built to the homeowners on that street. Just highlights the need for them to really come together and figure out a long-term solution to that. We've always pledged to help them as best we can. We did meet, trustee Winward and trustee Pedloski did meet with the Village of Cold Spring. And I don't know if you want to add anything to it?
We mostly just wanted to make sure that the lines of communication were open. We thank them for being responsive when there's emergencies, but try to sit down with them and talk about some longer-term solutions, which there are very many great low-cost ones, of course, but you know, better to have the door open. And we talked about some state grants that were available that Lisa and I had went to that conference back in September.
Yeah.
The lines of communication are open.
During the process, we did kind of walk the line that day with Sal Padala, who was the contractor who did the work. We have a really pretty solid idea of what needs to happen there for it to be fixed long-term and once and for all, and it's not going to be very cheap. So it's been made clear to the homeowners that the impetus to kind of fix this needs to come from them because it's going to probably require them to form a sewer district and split the costs amongst themselves. But we've volunteered to, you know, help them in any way we can. Go ahead.
How many homes are there?
Seven.
Seven, and there are actually one or two others that are looking to connect to a line if it were ever fixed correctly. So there is the possibility of maybe up to nine, 10, you know. Once you start digging the street up, homeowners around there, if they want to take advantage of it, and they want to pitch in financially, I think the more the merrier kind of thing. That's it for Pearl Street. Agenda item number four, just to reappoint Stevie Morando and Chris Keely to the zoning board of appeals. We reached out to both of them and they would like to re-up their terms. Number five, a resolution for registration day, March 7th, 2020, and appoint inspectors, Judy Myers, Gloria Van Tassel, and Greta Graham. Do you have the resolution for the registration day?
I have, right now.
Whereas the intent of the election law and of this board is to enable all qualified persons to vote in the general election of the Village of Nelsonville, which be held at the municipal building here at 258 Main Street, Pearl Street entrance on March 18th, 2020, between the hours of noon and 9:00 PM. And whereas a registration day is required to accomplish this action, and now therefore be it resolved that registration day be held for the Village of Nelsonville general election as follows. March 7th, 2020, noon to 5:00 PM at the municipal building, 258 Main Street, Pearl Street entrance. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. General item number six, delinquent taxes to the county. We have a list of, how many were there? Eight? Something like that.
Yep, basically. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And totals 4,954, 45. And it's unpaid taxes that we turn over to the county for collection. And the county sends the village a check and then they collect the taxes going forward.
Is there a motion to forward to the county?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number seven, establish dates for budget meetings. So this is beginning next week. We're looking to meet on, is it Thursday, the 27th? Get the calendar.
Yes.
Tuesday, the 3rd? Correct?
Mm-hmm.
And then the 5th, if we need. Do those dates work parallel?
Budget workshop.
7?
7, if that works for everybody. I mean, we can do 7:30 if...
I can't do that, March 3rd, I have an evening event at work.
Okay, you can do the 27th?
The 27th is the important one. Can we do the 2nd for those?
I can definitely do the 27th.
Okay, and Monday, the 2nd?
Calendar.
That works for me if that, is that good for everybody?
Which one, 27th?
27th is Thursday.
Thursday.
Yeah, I'm good.
And then Monday, the 2nd? Instead of Tuesday, the 3rd?
Yeah.
December?
Does that work for you, Dave?
Yeah.
Okay.
Monday, March 2nd.
Monday, yeah.
All right.
All right, and then if we need Thursday, the 5th?
Yeah, if we need it at the 2nd, I mean, we can, 5th, 6th, whatever.
I can't do schedule it though, okay. So the 27th and the 2nd are budget workshops.
All right. At this time, we'll open it to the floor for public comment. We are going to do a quick public hearing after the regular meeting is adjourned, just about the 5G law that we're looking to pass this evening. So any public comment on tonight's agenda?
Hey there.
Aye.
I'm Ashley Ralph with the Hudson Island Land Trust.
Aye.
I'm here, we're looking for approval to host another invasive species removal event at Nelsonville Preserve, like we did last year, along with the Girl Scouts as part of their Earth Day service event. And I think we need approval from the board to do that. So the date we're looking at is the Saturday after Earth Day, which is Saturday, April 25th, it'd be from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And we have a number of partners interested in joining us, so we have the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts this year, the, I have a list here, I'm just referencing this. The New York, New Jersey Trail Conference will be joining us again and they'll be leading the removal. Open Space Institute, the easement holder, Sustainable Putnam, which is a new group, Grove Halden is also a new group. And then we're hoping to get the Cold Spring Pizza Board again to provide lunch.
Can we, I think, we don't have a problem with it.
Great.
But we'll put it on our next agenda for official approval.
Okay.
I mean, you can go ahead and, it's pretty much just the...
Yeah, we have to go ahead and kind of start getting the word out for it.
I mean, unless you want to...
Well, no, I just had a question about the blue barriers that are around the trees, if those were put in there.
Yeah, as part of last year's event, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of them have fallen down.
Okay.
So...
We can repair that this year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be great, I didn't know if there was another option.
Yeah, are you going to be looking to do more of those?
I think so, yeah, that's up to the trail conference, since they brought those in.
Is there any chance of something that's not so...
Feeble?
Well, yeah, I mean, feeble or blends in better or something like that.
I can tell you that the trail conference has much less intrusive varieties of those, but they're shorter, so like you have to then replace them after a couple of years.
Which I think if we're going to do an event every, you know, every year, I mean, part of that could be going in there and replacing what needs to be replaced. A lot of them have been torn down by kids and stuff, we find them on the trails and...
We'll bring that feedback to the trail conference and see what they do.
Does anybody have any problem if we vote on this tonight? Is there a motion to allow another invasive species cleanup?
Yeah, a motion to proceed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Does it have to be on this agenda?
No.
Okay. The other thing, if you need to use the parking lot over there?
Uh-huh.
I'll get that approved for you.
That's great, thank you.
This relates to last week's workshop on 218. Mayor Bowman commented that he has no recollection of the board agreeing to a public referendum. So I went through the audio of the minutes and transcribed the following regarding OSI agreement, public referendum. I'll skip the OSI part. 7/22/19, 22-minute timestamp. Quote, "We'll lay out step by step what needs to be done working toward a public hearing and a referendum, possibly if that is what the village wants after public hearings." 8/19, 8/19 was a bumper day. Timestamp 35/28, Mayor Bowman. Next steps are to meet with OSI, lawyers have spoken, want to be on the same page regarding referendum before OSI undertakes survey. Same date, timestamp 36/48.
What was the timestamp on that second one?
Which second, 8/19?
Yeah.
I'm getting that one.
No, I thought you just read it.
No, that was the first timestamp, 35/28.
Oh, all right.
Same date, 36/48, Mayor Bowman, quote, "OSI wants to sit down to see..." Dot, dot, dot. "I think we're all on the same page that we want to have the public referendum for the residents to decide what to do with the property." Same date, 37/22, Mayor Bowman. Village attorney says that since no land or money changing hands, no public referendum is needed, but I think everyone on the board has said at one time or another that they want to see that happen. So 11/13, timestamp 57/11. Gloria Van Tassel asked, "Public referendum on the issue?" Mayor Bowman, after speaking with attorney, "No referendum is needed." So, there you have it.
What, I mean, what is...
Well, you said you didn't recall, I'm just bringing it up. Secondly, you say that it's not needed, are we prohibited from doing it?
I believe so, no.
Okay.
Well, I did say that it needed to be like a financial referendum.
Yeah. Since there's no changing of money?
There's no, there's nothing legislative involved, and you need something legislative to actually have a referendum. That's what the lawyer was saying.
Thank you for refreshing my memory, but I mean, through the whole process, we've been relying on what Brian has told us. And, yeah.
I was just saying, I said, you've said...
I don't, I don't see the point of even having it right now, other than it's just another opportunity to go out there and scream that we're giving away a piece of property, which is not what we're doing, or we're relinquishing our rights to a piece of property, which is not what we're doing.
That's just what we're doing.
We're protecting a piece of property. It's apples and oranges that we've been through a million times. I don't understand it.
Well, it...
But I mean, and you just, reading back my own words to me, thank you, because I was very non-committal on the referendum issue from the very beginning.
Clearly you weren't.
You said that, the last quote there was that the lawyer said we didn't need it.
Yeah, the lawyer, I'm not talking about what the lawyer said, I haven't spoken with the lawyer.
We rely, we rely on the village council. If the village council tells us that we're not speaking correctly, then we make a, we're able to change our opinion.
What you as members of the board have repeatedly said, and to go back on that is dishonorable.
You can question my honor as much as you want, I think my words speak for themselves.
They certainly do.
Go ahead.
Refresh your memory, but if you recall, I don't know if you went to the documents, the documents say otherwise, and I have to agree with you on that fact that the property itself, once OSI is involved, you have to go back to section 3.3 of the original easement, and it lays down the rules of how the property can be dealt with. And personally, I've read it, and I, I'm not going to go over the way I did last, last time, or the last meeting, but it's in writing, it's here, it's a document. And, I mean, it states, you, once the land goes to OSI, they really take it and they have the ability to do what they want with it, including 112 acres that they gave to us, because it does say, oh, now I gotta go back to this. All right, I'm sorry. I wasn't ready to enter this. But they, the grant to reserve the right, they could take back the property and resell it if they want to.
No, 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 no.
No, they cannot, that is absolutely not.
Not true at all.
Well, let's just go to the 3.3.
This is, but Kenny, Kenny, this is what I mean, though, I mean, what is...
But this is what I mean, you didn't read the documents, they...
Kenny, I helped, I helped them write the documents.
Oh, I would, oh, okay.
OSI has protected the 112 acres for going on, what, now, 20, 21 years, something like that?
Yeah, but it...
What have they done back there, other than leave it, leave it the way it is?
No, no, I have no argument with that fact.
And that's exactly what we're looking to do for the four acres.
If they want to, they have the ability, because it's in the documents, to take it back if they even want to.
No, they do not.
And do what they want with it.
Kenny, absolutely not.
I tend to disagree with you.
Land is still owned, but...
I read the documents...
The land is still owned by the Village of Nelsonville.
The 112 acres?
Yes, and the four acres. And it will remain to be owned by the Village of Nelsonville with a conservation easement on top.
I, I...
Any other questions?
But you're talking about now, forget about the 112 acres, you're talking about the 4.2 acres.
And the, and the other property on Gate House, yes.
And which other property?
The, there's another parcel on Gate House that's being donated to the village to be incorporated into the 112.
Okay. And that, that you have the right, we have the right as a village to do with that property what we wish, so be it?
It's being donated to us to protect it, to be added to the conservation easement. It was another parcel that was identified as a possible alternative to the cell tower site.
So it is being added to the easement automatically when they give it to you?
Yes.
So it's not the same as the outright property that we own as a community, right?
It's similar, it's similar to the park across the street, which was a private apartment building that burned to the ground. OSI bought the property and donated it to the Village of Nelsonville.
I've asked this a ton of times.
Actually, didn't donate, I think they sold it to us for a dollar.
What is the benefit of giving this property, the 4.2 acre site, back to OSI? What is, how does that benefit the village in what respect? I would, I understand green space and I love it.
We're not giving it. I feel like if anyone's watched the movie Groundhog's Day, it's like every Tuesday or Wednesday, it's like the same, same discussion we're having, we're not giving away property. End of story, it's just, actually, we are not giving away property.
Will the, will the property stay, fee simple, so that we have the right to do what we want on that property if we need to use that property?
No, it will have, it will have a conservation easement that's been negotiated with certain stipulations of what we can build there. Everyone, everyone has a copy of it, it was handed out numerous times now.
And I've read it numerous times, and I still feel that why would you give something away that we own, that we might need in the future? Maybe not. It's green space, it'll stay green space. We don't have to give it away when we own it, because we don't know what the futures in store for the village. So why give something away that you have?
We're not giving it away, Kenny.
We're just saying that we can't sell it for commercial development.
I didn't say you sell it.
No, but that's pretty much what the easement is saying, that we can use it for community benefit, like we went over this last time, but we can't sell it to any commercial developer to make money.
That I understand.
You're confused...
But you still restrict your uses of it.
Your confusion in the documents, I think, is that if we ever decided that we wanted to sell the property, that OSI would have first refusal on it, they would have to give us permission basically, so...
And that's not what I'm speaking on, I'm speaking on...
I'm just trying to correct what the statement you made earlier.
Okay, maybe I'm using some of the wrong language, but I do know this, the village owns that property, it's fee simple, right? That means we decide what, what to do other than the zoning laws about it, and we control it. When you give it to OSI, even though it's in the format of a parkland, you lose the ability to control the destiny of that 4.2 acres. Case closed.
We do own it fee simple, but it is a federally protected wetland, and it has been identified as parkland already, so...
Wetland is only part of the property.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to sit here and...
But you, but you keep avoiding the facts, and you keep going in a circle with the facts.
Kenny, the fact is, we own the property, now we will own it after OSI puts a conservation easement on it, we are not giving away ownership of that property. That is a fact. Can we all agree on that in this room?
Yes.
I see nodding heads, yes. It is a, that is a concrete fact. We own the 112 acres, just like we did before the conservation easement was there.
But you don't have control of the 112 acres, you have control of the 4.2 acres.
We have...
It's fee simple, it's that simple. It's fee simple, you know what that means?
Yeah.
You're a real estate guy, you know what I'm talking about.
I'm more than aware.
But you refuse to say, yes, Kenny, you're right, it's fee simple. If you said that, I'll stop talking. But you don't want to even say that. I don't understand why.
Currently, currently, as of right now, on February 18th, 2020, yes, it's fee simple. The village owns that property.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
And we will after, whenever we pass this easement as well. Thank you. Any other, any other discussion from the floor? Anybody?
So the easement won't go to a vote, is what you're saying also?
As of right now, it's, the village attorney's telling us it doesn't have to be. I don't think it has...
The village attorney didn't say much, he was here the other meeting, he had nothing to say.
He spoke pretty extensively on it.
He didn't have much to say, he didn't comment about anything that was going on.
Kenny, this is, I understand that, I understand that with this issue, we're at a, we're at a point now with everybody where we're never going to make anyone happy with it, other than the people who already support it, so...
I don't have a problem with it staying green, I still want it to be controlled by us.
Good, because it's, it'll be, hopefully, green forever.
So just for clarification, a, an initiative, or whatever you want to call it, is not prohibited? So if one is not done, that's the choice of the board?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sure, I'll, I'll...
Wait, sorry.
I didn't, I didn't follow that.
Are you talking about a referendum?
Yeah.
Well...
They're not prohibited from doing it.
I actually agree differently.
Oh, we don't, yeah.
I agree with what the lawyer was saying, that it had to be, something that had to be about our, our village budget.
Isn't it about 190 grand?
That is not in our budget.
That's the value of the property that we're signing the rights on it.
But we're not, it's not part of our budget.
I still want to know how much we got for the property off Wood Avenue that mysteriously disappeared from the village.
I spoke to some old divers.
Yeah.
Apparently Lyons was going to donate that to the village, and somebody on the village irked him, so he took it back. He didn't, he never gave it to the village, the village never took ownership.
Yes, Harold Lyons did donate it to the village. They had a big ceremony with a flag raising and everything, it was dedicated to his wife. They wanted to put a ball field up there. They wanted to charge Harold Lyons $2 a yard to take the topsoil out. Harold hints, "As I gave you the land, I'm not going to pay $2 for any topsoil," and he took the land back.
There you go.
But it was identified in our master plan as, you know, our only existing recreational facility.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, so, to prove my point...
I was on the committee.
This is what we're going to prevent in the future. It's going to be codified and it's going to be, it's going to be in, in writing that this land is protected. Any other public comment?
I just wanted to say, I think I understand some of the confusion, because I think maybe the word referendum wasn't the correct term to use, and I did look around, here at state law, whatever, it doesn't seem like a referendum is the thing. Yeah, a referendum wouldn't be triggered by this discussion, what we're talking about. They think the expectation, it might be muddy, the waters a little bit, the expectation, because I remember using the term, and that's why Gloria, I think, also remembered it was a little confusing, but maybe you can clarify that somehow?
I mean, personally, and we'll go back through the minutes, but the term referendum, when it comes to Seacor, I think was brought by the former mayor, that we were going to vote on it and put it up to the community or something like that. So, you know, it was not my idea to have a referendum on the subject, and I don't think it's possible. So...
I don't know, I feel like I own a corner of it, so I kind of want that to say it. A little piece, a little few blades of grass.
I understand.
If we're going to retread the same territory we've covered in the last three meetings, I'd just like to express again my view that there's enormous community sentiment that the land should be preserved, that OSI is a great organization, that this should go forward as soon as possible, so we don't all have to show up, you know, every two weeks to try to defend this piece of property that means an enormous amount to us to keep in its wild state. And I'm just hopeful that there's going to be, you know, that the OSI easement will happen soon.
Thank you.
And I don't think there needs to be any further. The survey was done, it was excellent, there was a lot of response, and there's enormous sentiment in the village to preserve the land.
Thank you. Thank you, any other public comment before we close down the regular meeting? Any closing thoughts from the board on our agenda, is there a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
All right, that is the conclusion of our February 18th regular meeting. Now we are going to open a public hearing on the topic of, let's see, the small cell wireless local law. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Thank you.
Thank you.
A motion to open the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Open to the floor, go ahead.
Before we get embattled in this, I think that everyone here should know that the FCC is totally in favor of 5G, the federal government is totally in favor of 5G, and we don't have $200,000 to fight them in court battles.
Agree.
We are, we are very well aware.
Yeah, and just to comment on that, to piggyback, that's a good segue, this code update was written by our attorney, Brian, but along with Hank Menkes, who is an RF engineer, and the two of them are very, very knowledgeable about the new FCC regulations, so they made sure they went through line by line that it complied, it didn't meet any of the criteria that the government could use to say that we were not being hospitable to 5G telecommunications service. So I felt really optimistic about their understanding of the regulations, the federal regulations, so I think this document puts us in a really safe but smart space going forward, so I'm confident in.
I, I heard a rumor, and hopefully that's all it was, was a rumor that we were gonna pass some kind of ordinance, that the relay boxes couldn't be any closer than 30 feet from a residence, and if that's the case, then what you're saying is there's no boxes going through the village of Nelsonville.
30 feet from?
No.
No, they say on, if it's erected on private property, then it has to be a setback of the height of the structure plus 10%, and if it's on the public right-of-way, then the suggestion is that it be co-located on the telephone poles, which are already.
I mean, I've seen the boxes, they're smaller than a direct TV antenna, and if they wanna give me $500 a month, I'll put it up on my roof.
Well, the issue is, just like the cell towers and the array on those, different companies use different boxes, so you could have four or five in one installation.
Well, I, I know someone that works at the GFC, and he's involved with 5G right now, and they're really getting hot and heavy into it.
Yeah, I mean, just watch the Super Bowl, and you see all the 5G commercials, how great your gaming will be on your cell phone.
And that's one thing that this code update does, is it.
I mean, it means nothing to me.
Yeah.
I don't have a cellphone, I don't have a computer.
Right, but it introduces a permitting process through the planning board, so that any request to install a 5G anywhere in the village would be subject to approval by the planning board, and it also grants the planning board to, you know, mitigate for safety hazards, to request that there's stealth design and camouflage, and that there are inspection protocols and removal protocols. So none of this was in our code previously, so it's, I think, granting a lot of solid protections for us in that regard without prohibiting the installation of 5G, but just making sure that it's very well regulated in the village.
So we don't have to worry about expending money in the law, suit type thing again?
I mean.
Really?
Can't, can't tell the future, I don't have my crystal ball, but.
I'm speaking loud. And one other point that's important to make in the public hearing is just that we have to make an edit to one of the definitions. I, I don't know if we, if people are looking at the code update that was handed out, I know last month, so I'm not sure that you've been carrying it close to your chest. But one of the definitions here refers to scenic areas of special significance, and as we know, it's scenic areas of statewide significance is the actual terminology, so we will be updating that language, and we're officially notifying the public that that change will be made.
Any other questions, comments, discussion?
So, this is for Nelsonville's code, that square with whatever those standard codes.
Yeah, they're both working on their own version right now, as far as we know.
They're way ahead of them?
Yeah, and I, and I think, yeah, I mean, we, we started working on this, I mean, I think initial conversations happened probably two years ago, when we were reaching out to Beacon, I was thinking of doing the same thing, and they kind of abandoned theirs in favor of, I don't even know if they ended up passing a law, they, they were looking at it more of like a DOS and tower kind of thing.
From what I gather, they have not passed a DOS legislation, but they were, were working directly with Verizon to build a few small cell units of 50 feet throughout the town. And that's all I could find online.
Yeah, so they, they never ended up going through with theirs, they kind of fell apart at the last minute. I, I, you know, one of the strong things about our code is that there's been a cell tower portion of the code on there since like the late 90s, which is really ahead of the time for the area, so I think it is, you know, it's our responsibility to pass this because this technology's gonna be here tomorrow. I'm, I don't wanna jinx anything, but I'm honestly shocked that we haven't seen any further discussion about it. Other than that, you know, as, I think we can talk about it now, during the whole cell tower discussions, it was identified that they were looking into kind of a small cell 301 corridor from here to Carmel, because cell service is so horrible through phone stock. I think it's the way that companies are gonna get away with, you know, putting cell service in when they can't put towers into scenic areas, you're gonna have these small installations, but they need to be kind of line of sight with each other, or within, what is it, a mile or a quarter mile?
Yeah, less.
Yeah, it's like 500 feet or something like that.
And is there a proven health danger to the public?
Once again, we, we cannot, by FCC regulation, you know.
But it does say in the code that it must meet the federal and state levels of safety.
I mean, a lot of the literature we read, these are mounted to apartment buildings in the city, and the exposure is very high on one side, but shielded on the other, and by FCC rule, we can't take that into account, really, when it comes to either denying or approving.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
So if the communications companies are successful in getting the governor to fast-track 5G, this puts in, I'm assuming this puts in a little bit more strict guidelines than we would have otherwise, but there's a possibility that it could be superseded?
Yes.
Better to be more.
I mean.
So at the moment, there are no guidelines, they wouldn't even need a permit, they can just come in and say, we're doing it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So without this on the books, basically, they've been treated like, you know, a power company?
Yeah, I think, honestly, the governor would get so much pushback from cities across the state if he said, you're preempted from, you know, being involved in these sighting decisions, but it is possible.
Yeah, it's been like two years that it hasn't been going on, but, and he hasn't caved yet, but he could.
Yeah.
That's good, and this also puts in a means to charge the communication firms for.
An important part.
For the modules.
I'm glad you said that, yeah.
So it does, it puts in a stipulation so that we can get funding or money from these installations if they ever do go forward?
That's great.
The ones in public right-of-way.
Public right-of-way, so that would pretty much be like.
But, no, I think all of them actually, I mean, if it is also in the village property.
For permits and things, but I don't think for, or is it for? Any other questions from the audience while we're looking into that quick? Nothing?
Yeah, you're right, it's access fees and fees for the use of village property in the right-of-way, and review fees for applications.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is Main Street considered village property, since it's so many feet from the center, belonging to the state? And the poles, I think, are in the state line.
The poles are on state property.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure, I mean, we might wanna just double check with Brian, but I'm pretty sure that Village Highway Law allows us to dictate the permitting of these, this sort of unit in the right-of-way, even if the road is state. That's my understanding of the law, at least, but we can just double check that.
Any other questions? Just a comment. Yep.
Actually, we worked on that. It's gonna be interesting.
Doing our best, right? No, but I mean, it, it started with, when you were on the board, looking into this, so I mean, everybody's worked on it.
Huawei is years ahead of us on 5G.
Who is?
Huawei.
Where is that?
China, so when the government opened the business with.
Oh, jeez.
They're way ahead of us.
I don't wanna use that, I don't think I wanna use that as a model for much.
Doug, yes, check on that, because I remember years ago, we used to have a PTA barn sale every year down where Juanita's is now, and when we went, we would put up a banner across the road, under the two poles, and we couldn't do it, so we got state approval.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same with our Christmas decorations, I mean, we need approval to do those.
Yeah, there's case law about this, it's been a while since I've read it, but it's about pole attachments in the right-of-way in a village, and it, my understa, I'd have to review it, but my understanding is that if the village is sort of dictating things for the, for the, the community health of the village, that it can have some say in governing items on those poles in the right-of-way, but don't quote me on it, yeah.
Who's gonna pay to use those poles, us or the state?
That's the question we want answered. At the end of the day, I mean, it's, it's.
Better than nothing, though, anyway.
Do the telephone and cable companies, do they pay for access to Central Hudson's poles?
Well, Central Hudson owns the poles.
Right.
I'm sure it's.
And the other companies pay them for use for rental of the pole.
Because that seems kind of like it's setting a precedent for putting 5G on the poles.
What, you're saying you don't want them on the poles?
No, I'm saying that, that the fact that we already have someone with the commercial operation going on from pole to pole, granted, they've always been there, and this and that, but I'm wondering if that's gonna set a precedent for when 5G is introduced, to put them on poles.
Well, it's gonna come down to a pole, the pole gonna transform around it, and there's more which you could put on a pole, you know? Pole can only take so much weight.
So, do you wanna get clarification on Brian from this before we move forward with the law?
Okay.
We can do the negative, we'll close the public hearing, do the neg deck, and then we can dissuade you to do this as our first order of business on our next meeting.
Sure.
Any other comments from the audience, questions? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor? Aye. As, in our push to pass this, we do have to pass a New York State secret declaration. Our attorney has prepared the forms, Part 1, 2, and 3 of the environmental assessment forms, it is a negative declaration, unlisted action.
Can I just read something?
Yeah, go right ahead.
This, this has to do with reimbursement for the use of public right-of-way, this might actually pertain to what we're just discussing, but it says, in addition to permit fees for these structures, every unit located in the public right-of-way is subject to the village's right to fix annually a fair and reasonable fee to be paid for use and occupancy of the public right-of-way. So public there, it's not saying village or state, but just public right-of-way.
Yeah, I, I still see the gray area that they're pointing out, though, so we need to get.
If Central Hudson owns the poles, or the state owns the poles.
I mean, technically, the cable.
It doesn't really change the law, though.
Right.
The, the cable company pays a franchising fee to the village to kind of service the area, I don't know what their agreement is with Central Hudson, though.
That's, we should look into that.
Yeah. So for the, the secret, let's just get that kind of bookkeeping out of the way. Negative declaration on the local law, is there a motion to accept? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. And then we will table the actual passage of the local law until next meeting.
Okay.
When we get clarification.
Good.
And hope we get no 5G proposals between now.
In the next 30 days.
I guess that's it.
That's it, right?
Yeah, because we don't really, we're not, we closed the public hearing, Brian said that we do that, we're good. We're done, thank you for coming, everybody. A motion to adjourn.